This conference will now be recorded.
Dan's microphone is muted for some reason, but I guess it's alright. He wants it muted and there's no picture. Okay, now your mic-
The mic is on. When you're not speaking, you tend to get feedback, Tony. So you're better off if you're not speaking to leave the mic off. And just turn it on when you have something to say.
Alright, your mic was off. We don't see you though. We'll see your handsome face, Dan. Just your voice, so it's alright. Eric, would you like to read some, any brief guidelines? Or we just want to get into the meeting?
Yeah, just real quick. Welcome to City of Kingston's zoning board of appeals meeting, May 14th. I'm just going to go over some quick guidelines for this meeting because we are meeting virtually. I asked the public to remain muted. And off camera for the length of the meeting. That does not go for the applicants or the neighboring property applicants. Those are us, the public that are joining us by audio. Well, meetings are recorded. Both video and written transcripts will be made available to the city's website at a later date. Actually, it will be recording that will be placed on the city website. And I'll let you go ahead with that, Tony.
Alright, thank you, Eric. As I said, my name is Tony Arkalevich. I'll be chairing this virtual meeting. Take a moment to explain how the zoning board of appeals functions for anyone listening to the meeting. The board is comprised of five members and two alternates. We have been appointed to serve the citizens of the city of Kingston. We perform this service to the best of our abilities on a voluntary unpaid basis. And the other board members joining us tonight are Brian Cafferty and Mary Newbauer. So we do have a quorum of three. And maybe somebody will be joining us as the meeting proceeds. We'll see. This is the first time using this technology, so please bear with us. Board members are asked to please be recognized by raising their hands so they can be identified. And Eric Kitchen, zoning enforcement officer, will be at the controls. We will have a period for public comment and Eric will go over that for anyone that's viewing the meeting or listening to the meeting. We will have public comment after each variance request has been presented. In this period is an opportunity for individuals to make a statement of opinion, not to engage in debate. You will be instructed as to how you will access this opportunity by Eric Kitchen. And each speaker must state their name and address for the record. Speakers must be brief and to the point to allow everyone a chance to speak. And speakers must address the board as a whole, not individual members and not other speakers or audience members. Professional demeanor is expected. Our first agenda item is Charles Shikowitz, 46, Henry Street. Zone R2, section block lot 56.109-3-4. And I believe he is with us. I see him up there. You can unmute your-
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. The applicant, Mr. Shikowitz, is seeking an area variance from chapter 405-34 of the City of Kingston zoning code. Park three vehicles on the street after he converts a single family to a two-family dwelling. Immediately, I want to make sure the record is straight on the approval. How many apartments? We didn't receive a letter from Mr. Shikowitz. Board members basically explaining what the apartments will serve. I do want to ask to make sure we have the correct number of vehicles, parking, variance. How many apartments will you have in the building?
It's going to go from a one to a two. Two, like a one apartment to two apartments.
Both, both-
Yeah, one family to two family, yeah.
Okay, how many total apartments will you have in the building?
Two total.
Two totals, so that's where we get three because we need one and a half for each apartment. The three is accurate.
I guess so, yeah.
No, I-
I guess so.
I just want to know how many apartments we're going to be in the building. So we will, we will keep the three. So the variance will be for on-street parking for three vehicles. And Mr. Shikowitz's letter to the board indicates that the one apartment, first floor apartment will be for his mother, elderly mother. And the upper apartment on the upper floor will be for his brother, who will be a caretaker for his mother. Am I accurate in that description, Mr. Shikowitz?
Yep, yeah, that's right. Yeah, yeah, he's going to be, you know, he'll get funding for that, yeah.
And there is no, I took a drive past the property. I didn't, I saw a driveway, but I didn't know if it was attached to your home.
There's no parking yet. Yeah, no, that's not, that driveway is for the neighbor. So it actually doesn't have any parking at all. But I have this house across the street which has parking. Sorry about-
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Alright, yeah.
My phone went off. Yeah, so there's, so there, yeah.
I drove by the building Saturday morning. And given the virus and everything, of course, there'd be a lot of people home. But there wasn't a lot of parks in the street, a lot of parking spots on the street on Saturday morning. Is that typical of-
There's, there's never, parking is never really an issue here. I mean, there's, I think a lot of these people that live in the-
Saturday morning it was an issue. Saturday morning-
Oh, there was a lot of cars Saturday morning? Yeah, I mean, it's, I never have to struggle to find, I mean, I have, we have two spots at 57. Where it's right across the street. That's where I live. That's where we all live right now. And so we can fit two cars in there now. But you never have to drive around the block or anything. You can always find a spot right in front of the house, no matter what.
I assume your mother's not a driver, so that's-
She doesn't drive, no. She doesn't drive at all.
Her mate probably has a car, so there'll be a spot for your brother. The three is the-
Yeah, exactly.
Any questions, Brian? You just lost your handsome face there. Can you hear us? There you go.
Hello.
Any questions, Brian?
No, I read the information. I haven't been by the property. I don't- My, my only question is, is that this is a family thing that you're trying to accommodate? Was it your mom? Is that, is that what I read?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, my mom, I want my mom, right now, I want my mom to be on a ground floor apartment because she just, she doesn't go out of the house unless she, you know, it's too, going upstairs is not really comfortable for her.
And the neighborhood, the neighborhood is, in that part, I mean, there, it's, it's a mixed, it's a mixed, it's somewhat of a mixed neighborhood in terms of the number of units, right? There's, there's one and two-bedroom and three-bedroom, I mean, six unit.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
It is zoned for two-family.
Yeah, there's three, and I think, yeah. Yeah, it is zoned two-family, yeah. And a lot of the places don't actually have parking. Like it's sort of, like it seems like it's like every third house doesn't even have a parking driveway at all. So, and so, so it didn't have a driveway at all, but, you know.
No, it wouldn't be on the street. Any other questions, Brian?
Yeah, just, this is the variance for the parking, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Three vehicles on the street. Mary, any questions for Mr. Shikowitz?
No, I'm good.
Alright, board, how would you like to do this? Typically, we hear all the variances, but given this situation here, this virtual, you want to vote on, on each variance?
I think if we could just, if we're clear, we can just go ahead and do these. And then people can get back to their life and, you know, we'll deal with it after the meeting with, you know, any paperwork that needs done.
That was my, we agree, you know, different circumstances. We don't need to keep people on the screen here. I'm, I'm ready to make a motion to accept this area variance.
Okay.
One second.
Alright.
All favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, 3-0, approved. Okay, you have your area variance. Good luck with your mom and-
Alright, thank you guys so much.
Sounds like a good situation for your mom to be in the first tier.
Yeah, I'm really excited about it, yeah.
Good, good.
Thank you. Alright, guys, have a great night. Appreciate it. Alright, bye.
Bye-bye.
Do we have the Aitkins on the phone? I see their name. You can, if they, David and Beth Aitkins, okay, you can unmute your microphone. Can you hear us?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Okay. Porty, Mr. Kavanaugh, I'll let you know when you can unmute, okay, because you will have an opportunity to speak also, alright? Okay, we have, on the next agenda item, we have Beth and David Aitkins, 87 Lincoln Street. SBL 48.82-8-8.1, Ward 7, Zone RR. I'm going to read verbatim what I have on the agenda and then I will check with parties to make sure it's accurate, including Mr. Kitchen. The applicant is seeking an area variance from chapter 405, attachment 2 of the City of Kingston zoning code. To build a two-car attached garage with storage space 12 inches from the east side of the property line. The existing driveway touches the house and runs along the fence line. The proposed garage is 20 feet wide at the front and 25 feet at the back. As the house has a setback at the existing side entrance. The proposed garage is 35 feet long, allowing for cars on ground level. And a set of interior set of stairs leading to storage space upstairs. Is that an accurate statement, Mr. and Mrs. Aitkins and Mr. Kitchen? Okay, just as a short history of this request variance. We, as a board, the ZBA had approved an area variance for a garage on 5/10/2018. Subsequently, footings had been placed and that was the extent of the construction. And there was an appeal from Mr. Kavanaugh, heard by the zoning board of appeals, with a decision reached to, I'll read from the resolution. The appeal was granted, Mr. Kavanaugh's appeal was granted on 12/4/2019. To the extent that the building permit on the original variance granted and garage was revoked without prejudice. Meaning that the Aitkins could return to the zoning board of appeals to reapply to the board for what's called legally the novo consideration of an area variance based upon complete and accurate presentations regarding the actual work that is contemplated. And I emphasize complete and accurate presentation because that was the basis of overturning the original decision of the zoning board to construct the garage because the extent and design was significantly different than what was presenting to the zoning board. Now, there is a letter from Mr. Kavanaugh that was submitted. Boards should, members should have received that. Questioning the exact distance from the property line to the footings that are in place right now. And actually questioning that there may have been a discrepancy on the property line. Now, the property, correct me if I'm wrong, everybody disappeared again, Eric. So I don't know what happened. Is everyone still here?
Yes.
I see everyone.
I can't see everybody, so that's alright. As long as everybody can hear what I'm saying.
Yes.
So Mr. Kavanaugh did submit a letter to the board for tonight's resubmission of and reapplication of this variance. Mr., there was a, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. and Mrs. Aitkins, there was a survey conducted by Viteri surveyors. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay, so there was a survey. Mr. Kitchen, because Mr. Kavanaugh's letter questioned the accuracy of the property line, the measurements. We had the survey and it was done by Bernier and Larios. He references that in his letter to the board. And it was done by Bernier and Larios. Did you have the opportunity to speak to any party from Bernier and Larios regarding this matter? And what was the sum and substance of your conversation?
Yesterday, yesterday morning, I had the opportunity to speak to Chris, Chris Zell from Bernier and Larios. Who informed me that he's had many conversations with Mike Viteri, who was the surveyor for Atkins. And he told me that they are both in agreement. Where the stakes are placed is the rear property line and that there is no property line dispute, in dispute at all.
So he's in agreement with-
Both survey-
Viteri and Chris Zell are in agreement on the two surveys?
Yes.
Dead. Okay. So with that being said, it's my understanding that the distance from the property line, there is, there are stakes. You submitted photos of the area and there are stakes on the property line of the Aitkins property. Were they placed by the surveyor?
Yes, they were placed by Mr. Viteri.
Now, you measured from that stake to the footing and what I am gathering is there is a variant, a varying amount of footage from the stakes along that line to the footings that are in place. Anywhere from 18 inches to 22 inches, is that accurate?
That's correct. In the front of the garage, the front corner garage to the property line is 18 inches. And from the, I measured from the rear corner of the garage where the garage is going to end in the back, it was 22 inches from the property lines to the footings.
So for our purposes, though, I don't know where the 12 inches came from. So we're at a, what I read was 12 inches from the east side. Is there anything that's 12 inches? In the distance?
The Aitkins, I think the Aitkinses need to answer to that.
We were asking to build within 12 inches of the line. We are further away than 12 inches. The front is 8, back's 22.
I didn't-
Yes, nowhere are the footings 12 inches at this point?
No.
No, it's further, it is more than, yes. So we will not-
Okay, so for purposes of our resolution, when we vote on this and when our consideration, I'm going to substitute, because I want to put 18 to 22 inches. I'm going to substitute 18 inches from the east side of the property instead of 12 inches.
That's fine, that's fine.
Eric, is that alright?
Yes.
Then we can discuss the other matters. And like I said, Mr. Kavanaugh, Mr. Porty, you have a chance to respond. I'm just establishing what the resolution and what the consideration is here between the board members.
Steve, do you have a question?
Yeah, Tony, instead of making that an exact 18, I would allow for some allowance. Because surveys do have a certain allowance built in. It may be a inch or a quarter of an inch, but-
We need a number for our resolution and our consideration because the variance needs to be a number. If it varies, it varies, but give me a number.
So instead of 18, 17, that would give us that allowance that the survey may have.
So what number would you recommend?
17 would be fine.
17?
That would be fine.
Okay. Is that agreeable to the Aitkins?
That's fine by us. The only reason we asked for 12 was to be sure that we had plenty of, plenty of room. That we didn't go any closer than. I understand what you're saying.
But we need to, we need to establish the variance, so, okay. Now, let's get into, you did submit extensive plans for the garage. I see that it is going to be a two-story. There's going to be an additional story on the top of the garage where the cars are. I know there was some discussion regarding windows in the upper area in the meeting, the original meeting that we had back in December. I see there still are the windows there. Am I correct, Mr. and Mrs. Aitkins?
Those are the plans as, as they were designed, yes.
And this will be for storage. This isn't going to-
That is it. There's no living-
This, this is not going to be an accessory apartment?
Absolutely not. It is not living space at all. It is storage purposes.
Okay, the reason why I ask about whether or not this is going to be an accessory apartment, first of all, in an RR, accessory apartments are allowed. But there are some very strict guidelines in actual, not even guidelines, rules, regulations regarding the accessory apartments in the RR. The reason I ask, on one of the sheets, maybe it was just a template for, from your contractor. But I noticed on one of the sheets, it talks about bathroom fixtures and things of that sort.
No, we don't have a bathroom.
There, there is no bathroom?
There's never been a bathroom on that project.
No, I'm just looking at, you're from Mid Hudson drafting and designing. It's describing the general construction notes, design criteria. And it says that all bathroom circuitry to be GFI type or ARC fault outlets for the bedrooms. More plumbing fixtures will be selected by the owner. It's on, on the sheet, the last sheet of your Mid Hudson design.
There is no bathroom. There's, there's no bathroom in this project and I believe that's just standard printing that he puts on all his designs.
Okay, I just want to get it on the record, alright, that it was there. In your record that this is not going to be, it's just going to be storage, no fixtures, nothing of that sort. There, it is, it is an extensive project and I see that there is going to be the deck, not the deck, but the balcony type thing still on there. But I'm going to be right up front as far as I'm concerned and the zoning board is concerned. I'll speak for the zoning board. We leave the building permit to Mr. Knox. We're, we're the zoning board. We make sure that the language in the zoning code is met. And right now, the language that we need to focus on is the 17 inches area variance. As far as the design and construction, we leave to Mr. Knox. The zoning board does not have any approval on, on the design necessarily, other than what I will get into when we get to our determination, consideration. But at this point, Brian, do you have any questions for Mr. and Mrs. Aitkins?
Well, my question, my question is, is it's, it's not your intention to ever finish the second level of the place and turn it into living space?
Absolutely not.
Okay. And, and if, if we were to grant the area variance, would you be opposed to, to a contingency that it could not be converted at a later date to living space?
I, it is, it is not my intention, so I don't, I, I don't, I don't plan on doing that, no, so.
I guess, I guess the concern is, just so I can, so I can just put it out there, is, you know, the, the variance is, is putting the building, you know, essentially right on top of the property line. There's a second level on, on, on the building and, and if it were ever in the future to become living space, it would greatly impact the neighbor's privacy. So that's the only reason why, why there's, you know, I had the concern. So I don't know what, whether Mary or Tony, how they feel about it. I just thought it was worth talking about because this variance runs with the property. So a new owner could just say, oh, this is a great space. Let's turn it into, you know, a game room. And, or some to that effect. And then, and then the neighbors would, you know, be, you know, would be dealing with that, with that issue. And I guess because it's so close and they use your backyard, I guess there's a pool or whatever, yeah.
Right, so can I, can I speak to that for just a moment?
Sure.
So I have a pool that I put up every year as well. And Mr. Kavanaugh's property, yes, this would be very close to the line. But his property also, he has a two-story garage with a deck next to his pool that does look clear over the fence into my yard. I'm not asking for anything more, anything other than what he already has himself. His property is very close to the line. I'm not sure what the survey actually shows. But his, his two-story garage is within just a couple of feet of, of the neighbor to the south. And his house to the north side has living space windows that look into the neighbor's yard on that side. So I do respect that, you know, his privacy. But we live at the bottom of a hill and this is not living space. So I do, I do understand what you're saying, but, you know, to-
You know, the, the problem-
That's a valid point.
Yes, and the thing that can, I want to make sure that we're getting accurate information in terms of what this is going to be. The problem with, the problem I see with the Aitkins making a commitment that this would never be turned into an accessory apartment is really tying their hands in terms of what legally is allowed in, in the triple R and double R zone. And now there would need to be a building permit that are granted for that. And there would be some procedures that have to go through as I'm looking in the zoning. But I'm a little hesitant to have anyone that comes before us be denied their legal rights of what they can do with the zoning code. But by the same token, I'm hearing you, Brian, because one of our considerations for an area variance has to be whether it, the effect of our variance on the character of the neighborhood and et cetera. So I know where you're coming from. It's just, I'm hesitant to have somebody, you know, the old saying, you can't give up your rights, you know?
No, I, listen, I, we live in a city, you know, we're right on top of one another. You know, I look over into my neighbor's backyard, you know, I share a driveway with the neighbor. I mean, I get it. And, and, you know, they, the Aitkins made a, made a good point, you know. The, the neighbor also, you know, also has the ability to look over into the other neighbor's yard. So everybody's, you know, if you want privacy, you buy, you buy five or 10 acres in the country and you build a house in the middle of it, you know, so.
Right.
A city is very hard to accomplish privacy, so.
Mary, do you have anything you want to add or ask?
I, I agree with both of you, and I think, I don't want to take their rights away down the road, or if somebody else buys the house, and they want to turn it into a living space, they're going to have to, like you said, Tony, go through everything that anyone else would have to do. I agree. And given the fact that the neighbors has the same situation that they're trying to complete.
Right.
Okay, I, I, I don't think we should take away their rights. I, I understand what Brian was saying. We live in the city. I live in the city. I have a neighbor right next door.
I'm not, you know.
Yeah, no, I hear you. I hear you. But I, I agree with you, Tony. I don't think we should take anybody's rights away. I think at this point, just put on variance.
By the same token, I don't want anyone to have to agree at this point that they have a right to do, but by the same token, I want to know, what I'm considering this evening is a storage area and not an accessory apartment. So, I want to get it on the record that what we're considering tonight is not an accessory apartment, and when the building permit is granted by Mr. Knox, it's not going to entail a, an accessory apartment. And I pointed out on the contractor's documents that it alludes to various things that are part of an accessory apartment. Now, that's on the rec, what will be on the record is, because I will ask the Aikens before we make our determination one last time, is this garage with a storage area, or a garage with an accessory apartment? And that response will be on the record. So, at this point, I don't have any further questions. I would like to, now, Ms., Mr. Aikens, if you could mute your microphone and listen while I allow Mr. Kavanaugh and Mr. Porty to speak, and if we have a question of you, then you would unmute your microphone, okay? Unless you have anything to add, Mr. and Mrs. Aikens?
No, just that we, we are in agreement that the, I mean, a full design was put to the board, but the variance that's being requested doesn't really be, any of the other deckwork, the balcony, any of that, isn't considered as part of this. The variance is just to determine the distance from the line, correct?
I'm going to, I'm going to tell you where it, it does to a degree matter when we get to that point of our decision, because I'm going to do a very labored and thorough analysis of this area variance, just to get it on the record. And at that point, you will know that there are aspects that do play into this area variance too with design, but we'll do that. So, would you mind muting your microphone, and then if we have a question from you, you would unmute it? I'll ask you to unmute it?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Kavanaugh, Mr. Porty, can you unmute your microphones?
Yes, I'm here.
Yeah, I can't see Mr. Porty. I can, I can hear you though. Can you hear me, Mr. Porty?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Good. All right, now, you've heard the discussion regarding this. You heard the history. I think I accurately described the history, Mr. Kavanaugh, Mr. Porty. Accurately, did I leave anything out of the history of the two meetings, et cetera?
Not that I-
That was a good synopsis of the prior meeting that we were involved in.
Yes.
Respect our motion a few months ago.
Okay, good. So, what, I did mention, Mr. Kavanaugh, you submitted a letter. You heard Mr. Kitchen's discussion with Mr. Larios. I mean, at this point, are you satisfied that the surveyors are in agreement?
It seems that the, both surveys match up to one another. Now, the exact line on my survey shows it off of the backside of the fence. I believe the distance of, if you, you see my survey that I submitted, but I believe they're, they're taking the survey from the inside of the fence, the distance, not the outside of the fence towards my neighbor's yard. You know, I have a little concern of if, if those states are proper, but.
Well, I mean, okay, but you're, you, you're satisfied that when Mr. Kitchen has relayed on record-
Yes.
Okay, you had no doubts about the discussion, and thank you. So what would you like to add? You heard the discussion. You heard the variance that's being considered, we're using seventeen inches. And you heard that the intent here is to construct storage areas above the garage, not apartment. Is there any question you may have, or any comments that you'd like to make, or Mr. Porty make for our consideration?
Would you like to start, Ron?
Yeah, over a, a few things. I, I think, just with respect to the issue that was raised about imposing a condition that the space never be used for living quarters, I would just remind the board, with all due respect, that it's the board's obligation to grant the minimum variance that it deems that it's necessary and adequate to preserve and protect the character of the neighborhood, and that the imposition of conditions are very routine and required by the board, once it realizes that, that the structure that's being sought to be placed within the setback area is going to be involved in some type of use that would impose upon the character of the neighborhood and the health, safety, and welfare of the community and the neighborhood. So, here, we're talking about a two-story structure that's going to be inches from the rear property line of Mr. Kavanaugh. And I should point out that I have a survey here that I'm looking at, and in fact, the structure in the, in the back of Mr. Kavanaugh's house that is closest to the rear property boundary is not a couple of feet away. It's got to be a good thirty feet from the rear property boundary. So we're not, we're not talking apples to apples.
That's correct.
And I think that a big concern we have is that the board would be setting a precedent by allowing people in this neighborhood to start constructing two-story buildings against the rear property lines. We, we agree that in the side yards, a lot of these houses are very close together. There are structures on or near the property boundaries in the side yards, but you don't see that in the rear yards. You don't see two-story structures that abut the rear property line of another homeowner. So, we think that this does not comport with the statutory criteria that the board has to look at to determine whether or not to grant the requested variance. This would have a substantial adverse impact on the neighborhood, and set a horrible precedent with respect to building these types of structures in the rear yard. And another question I have, if it's just for storage, why are there still windows being shown on these plans that would face into Mr. Kavanaugh's yard? If it's for storage, it's unclear why there would be the necessity for any windows on that side of the structure, nor why there would be a balcony on a building that's being used for storage. And that, that seems very curious. And the other thing I should, I'd like to point out is, this is not a normal-sized garage that they're requesting. This is a, a, an addition to the house, a full-size addition to the residence, which is proposed to be thirty-five feet in depth, which is unusually large for something that is proposed to be for a garage and for storage. A garage is typically eighteen feet in depth. This is twice the depth of a standard garage, and we would think that that additional seventeen feet in the back of the garage would be sufficient for storage. This is practically the size of a warehouse when you add a second floor for, purportedly for storage. So, it, it's of grave concern to us that they're seeking a precedent in seeking to infringe what I believe is over seven feet into the setback area. And this is not common in that neighborhood, where you have structures built up against the rear property line. It's, in fact, we, I, I drove through there and could not see any other situations that were similar to what's being requested here. So, we would ask the board just to-
I would like to get an answer to that question. I think that's a good question. Are there any other two-story garages in the vicinity? So, I will ask that question of the Aikens when we get their microphone back on.
Yeah, and I, and also, I, I wouldn't necessarily refer to this as garage. This is a full-size addition to the house. It's twenty-five feet by thirty-five feet. That's quite a substantial addition. And it's, it's not our goal to prevent a neighbor from utilizing their property as they see fit, but these setback requirements were put in place. It's part of the policy of the zoning law and public distance between property boundaries, so that a neighbor isn't being completely closed in upon. So in this situation, you already have a neighborhood where it is very tight in the side yards, but here, you'd be enclosing this property, Mr. Kavanaugh's property, on three sides. We think that that doesn't meet the statutory criteria upon which the board could reasonably grant the requested variance. And so we would request that the board deny the requested variance, because it does not meet the minimum statutory criteria. And if the board were to contemplate granting it, that they impose appropriate conditions, including, as was suggested by one of the board members, about imposing a condition, since this does run with the land, that this could not be transformed into living quarters at any time in the future. We not only think that would be appropriate, but we would think that would be an obligation of the board to consider under the statutory criteria in granting the minimum variance required.
Okay, point, okay. Thank you for your point. Mr. Kavanaugh, do you have anything else to add?
Yes, to follow up with Ron, and the size of this building, again, being extending the garage out to thirty-five feet, I believe would be plenty of storage for my neighbors. They also have a barn in the back they could use for storage as well. The size of this building is actually larger than the homes to the immediate left and right of me. This is an addition to their home. It's larger than the two homes to my immediate left and right. And there is a storage facility within walking distance. It's a quarter mile away. They're going to completely obstruct my view in the backyard, my whole pool area, and my garage sits back off of their property a good thirty feet. The garage was built probably somewhere in the nineteen forties. Since then, there's been a different, the, the, the zoning in Ward Seven states, ten foot off a property line, and I'm sure there's a reason for that. I also have my neighbor, Frank Benjamin, here with me, because his computer doesn't work, if you'd like to speak with him as well. But it's the quality of life that we have. We've made our backyard into a small paradise, and this thing is going to completely obstruct our sun in the pool. We'll have no sun in the late afternoon. We just put new pools in gardens, and it just does not sit in the neighborhood. It's just not going to look attractive to us at all. It, I'm not even too sure how they're going to be able to put this building up, being a foot off of my property line, as far as even siding the building, or, or constructing this. When they were building the footings, they dug underneath my fence, onto my property, where the dirt has all fallen in. They took up three of the posts that are dug in the ground. I went to small claims court, but they're closed until further notice. But they've already destroyed part of a fence that I just put up three years ago. The posts are completely dug out underneath and undermined.
So, you know. It's a matter for the courts, Mr. Kavanaugh, within that.
Correct, but they are literally right on top of me, and I don't see why they need so much storage, when there's a storage facility right down the road.
But our job is not to delve into why people are thinking things, why people need this, or why people need that. We need to take the criteria that legally an area variance is granted, and one of that is not thinking about what someone else is doing, or thinking to do, or whatever. Do you, is there anyone, I have, have no idea if there's anyone listening right now, or you mentioned someone is with you that wants to speak. Is he in, in one of the neighborhood? Does he live in the neighborhood?
He's sitting next to me. He came over to help use my computer, because he received a letter in the mail as well.
Okay, would he like to speak briefly on that?
His name is Frank Benjamin. One second, please.
And where he, he has to give his name and address. Mr. Benjamin, your name and address?
Yeah, my name is Frank Benjamin. My address is 285 Clifton Avenue.
Okay.
My property, actually, it, it, it butts against Mr. and Mrs. Aikens, Mr. and Mrs. Aikens. I have a white fence out there. And actually, I was, for this project, you know, when it began, it did bother me, but now I see it, it's a foot off the line. And my fence right now is, after they just, I just noticed, they, they noticed me today, they put the states in the ground when they got surveyed. And I see two trees that the, the Aikens grew, directly on my property. They showed me that today. I couldn't believe it, you know? So my fence actually goes over another two feet. So they, that fence is going to be on my property.
Can we keep the comments to what is involved in our decision? The trees?
Oh, yes, yeah, but I'm just telling you.
That nature, and that within our first, you know? Okay. All right. Well, thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else out there that, I don't know if I can't see, that wants to comment on this particular issue? If not, Mr. Kavanaugh, Mr. Porty, would you please mute your mics, and I'll have the Aikens turn their mic back on? Please?
Yes, we're back.
All right. The question is, why are there windows in a storage area? I think I know the answer to that, but I'll let you answer it. Why are there windows in the design garage area?
For cross, for ventilation?
That's what I suspected, but I wanted you to put it on the record.
Yes, yeah, for ventilation purposes.
Okay. Board, help me, is there any to add? Sorry, Mr. Aikens?
Yes, the, they questioned the, the balcony. The balcony adds to the, to our house as a fire egress, because we only have one set of stairs, and that, that adds to a second egress out of our house. We have a very small, narrow set of stairs in the main house, and this adds for an additional fire egress.
I know the question I want to ask. Are you familiar with any other houses in the general vicinity, within that ward, in the general vicinity, that have garages with storage space above them?
Mr. Kavanaugh himself has. I believe it's a recreational space even that he has on the second story of his garage.
Mr. Kavanaugh has an area above his garage?
Correct.
He has, it's a two-story garage. I submitted pictures. He has a two-story garage, which is in Mr. Benjamin's backyard, off of his back property line, within only a few feet. And Mr. Kavanaugh has a recreation space, I believe.
I, I heard that. We don't need to keep, keep saying it. I heard it. Is there anyone else in the general vicinity in the neighborhood that has a storage area above their garage?
Uh, I believe, I believe at the end of Clifton Avenue, the Crescheras have a storage space above their garage. There are several two, two-story and two-car garages in this neighborhood. When you look at the design, it is very much in keeping with the look of the neighborhood. And as far as Mr. Kavanaugh's concerned for the height, the side of, the side of the building is not as tall as our house.
Okay, would you just, kind of just keep your comments without mentioning names, okay? I'd rather keep it neutral, and just make comments regarding the structure without putting Mr. Kavanaugh's name, Mr. Porty's name, Mr. Kitchen's name, or wake up there, Eric.
So the-
I'm only kidding, yeah.
So the, so what I'd like to add, Mr. Arcoevich, is that this, this is along the side yard. This is not, this is not, this is, this is on our side yard property.
It's a side yard, yes. The variance is a side yard. Yes, well, I'm aware of that. I think the board is aware of that. Now, let me just, yes, yes. Brian, do you have any questions for Mr. and Mrs. Aikens at all?
Um, no, I, I do-
Um, no, I, I do, I did notice when I was rereading the, the paperwork in, in preparation for the meeting, I was, I was a little struck by the size of the garage. But it hasn't changed. That's, that's the structure that's been proposed. The issue had really been down to the, to the setback from the side yard and, and the fact that, you know, the second story of the building is going to be used for storage. I can understand there being windows, you know, ventilation, daylighting, you know? So other than that, those are my, it's not a question, but.
All right, thank you. All right. Mary, any questions at all for Mr. and Mrs. Aitkins?
No questions, and I agree with Brian. I can understand why they would have windows in the second story of that. We have a loft in our garage. It's a one-car, small one. And when you get up in that loft with no window or ventilation, it's ungodly up there, so.
Okay, and this, Mr. and Mrs. Aitkins, and we had one person speak. You got his name and address. Mr. and Mrs. Aitkins, would you mute your microphone, please? The board is going to get into some discussion here, please. Thank you. All right, board, board Brian and Mary, we've heard from both parties. I remind the board that this was a variance approved back on May 10, 2018. The question was, that brought us back into an appeal, was the second story wasn't presented to us on 5/10/18. But the variance, I believe, the amount of the variance, the inches from the east side of the property hasn't really altered that much. So at one point, we did approve it, and the Aitkins did use that approval to put footings in for their garage, acting on that, that decision. They went ahead and put footings in. They didn't do any other construction because there was an appeal. But I'm going to take a very, very deliberate approach to this because Mr. Porty brought it up, and he's correct. I'm going to take the area variance criteria as established by New York State for every zoning board of appeals in the state. And I'm going to read it. I'm going to give you my opinion, and then Brian and Mary, you can then indicate your feelings on it. So first criteria for an area variance. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area variance. Okay, this, both of you get that? So basically, is it adversely affecting the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties? My feeling on that is certainly it's, assuming Mr. Kavanaugh tells me otherwise, right next door to them, they have, Mr. Kavanaugh has a garage with a storage area above. So it's not creating a detriment to nearby properties. In riding through the neighborhood, the garages are right on top of adjoining properties in that neighborhood. There's very little distance between the garage and the property lines of the adjoining homes. So I do not feel the character of the neighborhood. I do feel that the character of the neighborhood would be altered with an accessory apartment, but I'm being told that it's not going to be an accessory apartment. I think the character of the neighborhood comes into question then when you start adding accessory apartments to residential homes. But at face value, without consideration as a accessory apartment, I do not personally believe this is a detriment to the properties or undesirable. Undesirable is a strong word. Undesirable change to the character. So Mary, what's your feelings on that? So.
I don't think it's going to be a bad change to the, to the area. I agree with you, Tony, fact that there are several. I've been through that neighborhood several times, and there are, you're right. The houses and garages are right on top of the property lines. And I don't think that they're planning to put on, put this big, big structure that's going to stand out and look totally different than the rest of the neighborhood.
Brian, what, what do you feel about that criteria?
Yeah, I mean, look, it specifically mentions potentially detriment to nearby properties. I mean, that's clearly a point of view issue. I mean, the fact that the neighbor who feels most impacted by this has their own two-story garage with a storage area that looks up with their neighbor's property kind of makes it difficult, you know, to say that, now admittedly, this one's closer. But that's, they need this side yard, so. And in order, I mean, the scale of the building is not a problem in the width. It, you know, it's really, it's really when you take in the length of it. But yeah, in general, it's hard to make an argument that this is different than many other garages in the general vicinity.
Okay, thank you. Number two, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. I don't think there's any other method they can pursue. They need to construct the garage 17 inches from the line. The argument could be made, well, they don't need as big a garage. I mean, that's a personal decision that people make regarding their own properties. And I'm not going to get into making decisions for people on whether or not they need a smaller or a bigger garage or whatever. So I don't know any way that this could be achieved by some other method feasible for the applicants. Brian, what's your feeling on that?
Well, again, I don't, I don't, it's a, it's 35 feet long. Does it need to be 35 feet long? You know, I, you know, I, I get what they're doing, you know? They're going to have two cars in there. They probably have a little workshop area beyond that, stairs going up to the, to the, to the upstairs. You know, it's a, it's a nice handy structure. You know, it is, and, and we are offering them an area variance in order to build it. I just don't know whether, if, whether if it was 10 feet short or it would make much of a difference, so.
All right, thank you. Mary?
I agree with both of you and Brian. They have no place else to put it. As far as we get, we, the area variance is basically based on the distance between the property lines. I don't see where else they could put something that big. And I don't think, it's not our place, like you said, to tell someone how big their garage should be.
No. Okay, thank you. Number three is whether the requested area variance is substantial. It is substantial. There's no doubt about it. When you reduce your area distance from 20 to approximately one foot, a little over one foot, it is, it is a substantial. But I go back to my statement originally in riding around the neighborhood. If all the neighbors had to come to the board for zoning variance, area variance for their existing garages, I would doubt there would be very many that would not have a substantial reduction in the setback. You know, I've said it before, the setback, that, that code and the table in the back of that zoning code needs to be totally rewritten and come into reality of existing neighborhoods in terms of setbacks.
That code, I swear that code was written for a suburban neighborhood.
Well, it was written for a different city. I can tell you that, the different time, you know? Look at the matters, I don't want to get off track. Look at the matters we've talked about uptown Kingston and the setbacks that are supposedly going to be enforced in uptown Kingston. So anyway, I'm not going to argue that it isn't substantial. It is, but it's, it is because the code is outdated and it's not realistic to what's in existence in that neighborhood. So Mary, what's your feeling?
I agree with you, Tony.
Brian? Brian?
Yeah, I mean, it, yeah, it's, I'm not going to speak to, it, it just, I, I have a, you know, I, I've, there's, you can just go throughout the city and see situations where these accessory buildings, auxiliary buildings, attached or detached, are right, you know, are right on the property lines or very close to them.
Well, and considering that neighborhood, like I said, there wouldn't be many houses that would pass muster in terms of, of that area variance setback requirement on the side. Number four, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental condition in the neighborhood district. It's very similar to, number one, the character of the neighborhood. It talks more about, it does add the environmental condition. I have given some thought to this. I don't know, you know, any environmental condition that will be affected. I don't think there's drainage issues or changing drainage pathways or anything of that nature by putting this garage up there. Ryan, what's your thoughts on the criteria?
Well, the, it's a, it's a soft box design, so it pitches to the front and pitches to the back. It doesn't pitch to the side. So I, you know, I would, I would think that, I would think that the impact, at least from a drainage standpoint, is probably going to be relatively minimal on the neighboring properties.
Okay, Mary?
I don't think it's going to have any impact in any of those areas.
On the physical, environmental.
Right.
So five, the one that always, it piques my interest when we do area variance and use variance, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, which considerations shall be relevant to the decision of the board of appeals, but shall not necessarily preclude the granting of the area variance. I mean, I do not believe it was self-created. I mean, I guess you could say by making the garage so large and not making it smaller, it was self-created. But in making the, my opinion is, in the garage, the size it is, it's just really matching where the rest of the garages in the neighborhood are located adjacent to other people's houses. It's very close. Mary?
I agree. It's not going to be much different than any other garages in that area.
Ryan?
If you're going to do an attached garage and, you know, that's, that's where you're going to do it. And, you know, there's, there's no getting around it. I don't, I don't see the self-created issue, so.
Okay, at this point, we went through the five area variance criteria. We were all in agreement. And at this point, I would like to make a motion to approve the area variance requested. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Brian?
Oh, aye, I'm sorry. I, well, I seconded it, so.
Okay, so the area variance is granted. I, Mr. and Mrs. Aitkins, you have permission to construct the, the garage as outlined in the resolution. I would just want to caution you, okay? It's a caution. This is on the record that it's going to be a storage area. If at any time you do have a right in the RR district to have an accessory apartment, I urge you very, very strongly, if ever that changes in the future, the scope of the work, that return back to building safety and zoning board for discussion, okay? We don't want any more misunderstandings that resulted after the first approval of your area variance. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Oh, yes, yes, we do. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everybody, for your comments and your consideration. And we'll move now to the third agenda item. Stuart and Carolina Hart, are you in attendance this evening?
Yes, we are.
Yes, we're here.
Okay, I can't see you, but, and you're not up on the mic, so, thank you. I took a ride down onto the East Strand, and I'm assuming, and you know what happens to people who assume. There's Mr. Knox, this came on my screen. This is the brick building that's being renovated, and there's a fence in the back. Is that correct on this corner of Gil Street in East Strand? Because the number, you, you may want to get some numbers on your building there. I didn't see a 263 there. But I, I figured that was what we were going to be discussing this evening.
Tell that to New List.
Okay, I thought maybe I missed it. My wife says that I, I can't find my keys all the time, and she has comments. But it's a beautiful building. I remember it as a old German, there's Mary coming up, old German meat market, grocery store back when that was the heyday downtown Kingston on East Strand. There were all kinds of shops. Do you know who the previous owners were? I forget that owned, that operated the store there?
No, the, the person we bought it from was a, was a, it was a residence, Mark.
You may want to, when things settle down and you're done with your renovation, you may want to do some research. That was a very, very active store and meat market owned by, I believe, a German family that had all kinds, it was the place to go for all kinds of bratwurst and all kinds of other types of food. But so it's very nice to see the building being renovated. And this is, as I said, 263 East Strand, section block lot 56.6-11-8, Ward Eight, Zone R2. See, applicant seeking a variance from Chapter 405-9C, Precise 2B, to convert an existing carriage house on the property to a private home office for the owners. The office will be strictly used by the owners for their own personal careers to work from home. Home office will have no commercial traffic or customers. There wouldn't be any question on this and no variance needed if it was part of the residence. But because it's separate and distinct from the residence and the building, the requirement of the zoning for home offices is that the individuals live in the residence and conduct their office as part of the residence. So I'm assuming, again, assuming that the two of you will be living in the residence that's being renovated?
That's correct.
Okay, so the home office in the back will be used just by the two of you? Okay. It's, I, I'm on this, on this tone today, it seems, this theme today. There's no plans to make that an accessory apartment, correct? Even though, even though it would be allowed, there are procedures, as I said to the previous applicants, there are procedures that you must follow in order to make a structure an accessory apartment. At this point, this is an office, not another additional residence in there, correct?
That's correct. It's, it's just, it's just my wife and I, and we're going to be using it as, as our, it's, it's a single-family. I mean, we're R2 zone, but we're, it's a, it's a single-family house, and that will be an office.
Right.
Secondary kind of space.
Yeah, okay, just getting it on the record.
I, I would never, I would never use it as an apartment because I, it's, it's too close to the main building, and I, I wouldn't rent it to renters, basically just our, our main single residence.
Just, just wanted to get it on the record of what we're considering here, okay? Is there anything you'd like to add to the discussion? I mean, we pretty much talked about the building in the back, and you're doing the renovations. When are you anticipating completing the renovations?
I think we, we have, we just got our window permit from Mr. Knox to do the windows. And we actually have those. Those will be going in, in the next week or so. And then. And then we're hoping to finish in the next couple of months.
Oh, wonderful. Okay, uh, Brian, any questions for, um, the, Mr. and Mrs. Hart?
Um, what's the, uh, use going to be? Like, it's just a, a studio and office space or in-home office work?
That's correct. Both, both Karen and I work from home, so it's just, um, will give us an opportunity of like, like a work studio, a home office.
Um, I, the only other thing I have to say is I love that building. I love that property and, um, I love that, uh, I love what you've been doing with it. I walked by there a couple of, just a week or so ago and it looks great.
Thanks, thank you.
Really does. And I, I agree. I love that building too with the metal pillars in front that were made in the Rondell Steel, uh, mills, uh, in many of the former storefronts and current storefronts on Lower Broadway. You'll see those same metal pillars. And if you look closely, it probably will say Rondell Steel Works on them. If I'm not mistaken. But you're right, Brian. It's a beautiful building.
Tony, just correct me if I'm wrong. Is, was that the, was that the retail store for the Forst Meatpacking?
No, this was a German, German couple, as I recall, owned it. There was an article in the Kingston Freeman why, many, maybe a couple of years ago, that detailed the whole history of that building and the family. No, that, that, I don't believe that was the Forst. That was, um, a family owned and they lived, you know, upstairs, the old traditional building. Mary, do you have any questions from, for the Harts?
No, I'm just happy that it's being renovated. It is a gorgeous building.
Yeah, it is.
Is, I, one other question is, I know the, I know the, the commercial building in the front is partially in the flood zone. Is the carriage house in the back in the flood zone too?
Uh, I think the whole property is in the flood zone because we, uh, part of our mortgage, we have to have flood insurance. Uh, but I feel like we're a little bit up higher ground. The previous owner said the only time he really took on water was during Sandy. But obviously, we're right on the river, so it's, it's, our basement's wet for sure.
Steve, what, what that comment just, I know down on Abiel Street that hugs the, uh, Rondell, um, and that's, there, does the Heritage Area Commission need to be involved at all? I know they have jurisdiction on the Abiel Street properties.
They, they, they were involved and we met with them last year because the front of the building was, it was a, a commercial entrance that we closed off with the windows.
Well, yeah.
Last year, we went over the plans for the windows. We went over the back building and they, um, approved for us to move forward with windows and the exterior work. Uh, and I think they sent a letter to Steve.
Yeah. Now, that's the Heritage Area Commission or the Historic Landmarks Commission?
I, I, I could be wrong, but I think it's the Heritage.
Well, that's usually who has the jurisdiction in the flood zones down there. Okay, any other questions, Mary or Brian, for?
No.
No.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the, uh, use variance?
Yeah, still moved.
Brian?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
You got a 2-0 approval. Good luck with the, um, structure and do, when you get a chance, do a little history, uh, search and, on it. I think you'd be amazed and you would enjoy the, um, the story behind that storefront with the, this is a very, very active storefront in downtown Kingston. So, you know Steve at all? You're too young. You're a young guy. You remember that?
I, I don't remember the store. I, I remember it being a bar for a while, Blue Gardenia.
Oh, that was the.
Yeah, that too, that too, yes.
Oh, really? Blue Gardenia, I love.
Hey, thanks, because I have a, I have a book that I, I look up. It's 1942 and another one, 1970. And the property on Gil Street was listed as the Blue Gardenia, so now I know why.
There you go.
Little history for you, Mr. and Mrs. Hart. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
At this point, uh, no other business. Uh, thank you, board, for your, and Mr. Kitchen there for all your efforts tonight. I don't know why I can't see everybody and I, Brian, I, or, Dan, I think you're still on board with us here, so. Hello?
I am still here, yes.
Okay, some reason I could see me, Eric, Steve and Mary. And I can't see anybody else, so you gotta work on that, Eric, if we're gonna do this next month, all right?
Good job, though. Good job.
So that's not Eric.
Got us here. All right, I have a motion to, um, adjourn at 7:20?
My motion.
Second, Brian?
I second, yeah.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
20 and thank you, uh, Mary and Brian for showing up. I think we got a little work to do.
No problem.
We're.
I like this.
You like this. You look very,
I love this.
You look very comfortable, by the way, there.
I'm in my big old, my big old easy chair in my bedroom. Very comfortable.
I cooked a big, I cooked a big old burger with some mushrooms and onions and had it while we were meeting. Yeah.
Nice.
You heard the sizzle in the background. That was it.
Thought I smelled. Smelled pretty good. All right, everybody enjoyed.
You should say goodnight.
Goodnight, all.
Night. We close out and you guys close out?
Boy, uh, um, uh, Gartenstein didn't earn his, uh, earn his keep tonight, never spoke.
Not tonight, no. Very quiet.
Brian, I don't know what you did, but you just showed up now. I could see it, so good to see.
Well, some people dropped off, I think, that's why.
Looking well, so everybody stay safe, okay?
You too. Take care, guys. Bye.
You guys, thank you.